There we go. All right, today is February...[81.02][81.02](laughter)
Good try, Bonnie.[83.42][83.42](laughter)
Okay, rewind.[85.88][85.88](laughter)
Is it the 24th?[91.11][91.11](laughter)
Yes. Welcome, everybody, today. Let's try this again.
It's right there.
Thank you. It's April 24th. I am the chair today, Bonnie Hayes, and Tom Kendall has got an excused absence from this whole thing, so he's very lucky. And the first thing, we're going to do this in three parts today. Yes. The first part is that I'm going to introduce, not induce, but introduce Brian Belnapp. He is from Ward 4. He is the replacement for...
Jenna.
Jenna, thank you. From Jenner, and we're very pleased to have a full complement of board members here on it. So, welcome to it, and we'll rock and roll with you tonight and see what happens.
Good luck.
All right. So, everybody, I think we've watched him in the audience for the past four months, so welcome, and here we go. So, tonight, we have three parts. Three parts. The first part is from 5:00 to 6:00 to review our budget. The second part is from 6:00 to 7:00, and we will be having a joint meeting, a joint workshop with the city council. And then at 7:00, we will go into our own meeting, and we'll have our own meeting and pass a question, hopefully, and go from there. So, the first thing we got is about a couple of weeks ago, Katie said, "If you have any questions, email them to me concerning the budget." And as of noon time today, there were no questions, but one did, one lengthy question informational section came in this afternoon from Alfreda Fornia, and we are going to, you have a handout for us.
Yeah, I have two things I'm going to cover. The first thing is the adjustment into the budget because of the request to look at putting back the two ed tech positions that were removed, and what we have done to do that. Then, I've printed Alfreda's email, and I have the departments in question, and Adam and I will address those. Peter is going to address the technology questions, and Shelley will address the OLT questions, and then we'll see where we are.
Okay, let's go.
Okay. So, asking around putting the ed techs back in, Adam has made an adjustment that all unfilled teaching positions went from what had been budgeted at Step 10 Master's Degree to Step 6 Master's Degree. So, that was the change to the budget. With that change, we are now below zero. It was, and we're around $68,000 below the proposed budget. And so, one thing we could discuss is, do you want to bring in the computer science teacher and stay at zero, or do you want to stay under $68,000 to help the city offset their increase? So, here's the cost center impact of changing those 14 unfilled positions to MA 6. So, that's that. So, can you share that, Alfreda? And then, here is the revenue source. So, Adam, do you want to say any more than that?
The only change was changing the unfilled and then restoring the two ed tech positions that had been proposed and then removed. They're now back in. The computer science teacher is not back in.
Do you want to take that question first? Want to take that first?
I just wanted to tell you what we did in order to put those positions back in and not impact any other positions.
All right. This is a workshop, so no vote can be binding, and here we can't actually take a vote, but I can take a straw vote. So, everybody...
Hi, Dan.
Hi, Dan. Everybody up and down? Everybody agree with Katie in putting two ed techs back in? And what else, keeping the...
Right. And do you want to be below the zero by $68,000, or would you like to use that savings for the computer science position that was removed?
Okay. All in favor in restoring the two ed techs to Washburn and Walton?
Yeah.
Okay. Thumbs up?
Okay.
Go ahead, Dan.
Does it change the budget numbers?
Yes. It brings down the budget below zero.
Oh.
It's a savings of $68,000. So, what we did is, we budgeted the unfilled positions at MA Step 10, and we have moved that to MA Step 6.
That was in that email, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All right. We're good? Everybody good, Alfreda?
Yes.
Okay. The next question is, do we want to stay under zero, or do we want to add the science, tech, computer person to our budget? Discussion?
That will put us at zero.
That will make us zero.
Right. So, we either stay under, as the city has asked for some support, or you put that position back in.
Pat?
I know that the position is, actually, they're already teaching that class.
Correct.
So, what would actually be added, and how badly is that needed?
Right. So, right now, Eric Eiseman is doing a lot of this with his physics classes, so it would be really putting, okay, the position becomes computer science position. Eric would probably be transferred into that position, which would then open that physics, what he teaches. Probably, the whole science department would look at what their need is and then hire for that. So, it would be creating the computer science position that we don't have, and Eric would be transferred into that after, you know, we have a discussion, because he's already asked about that. Would I be transferred into that position?
Okay. And then, his position would be filled?
Correct. And then, his...
Depending on what the need is in the science department.
Everything dominoes. Everything dominoes. Yes. And then, his position would be filled. Correct.
How, how, go ahead, Alfreda.
Oh, thank you. Looking at, you know what I had sent you?
Yes.
There are places in there that probably would be able to replace that amount.
Well, we may not agree with that, but we can talk it through.
Okay.
Okay? Because some of the things that we have to clarify, I think there was some confusion, so...
Confusion on my part.
No, no.
Well, there might have been on ours, so that's just...
No. Alfreda, in fairness to you, I can see why it would be, and so, that's why Shelley and Peter are going to go over it. And then, if everybody agrees they could come down $1,000 here or $500 here, then that's what we can discuss. But, I want you to know what Shelley, why Shelley did her budget the way she did from input, and why Peter's budget is the way it is, and then we can discuss it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
But, we don't have to have this conversation until after we go through that.
So, well, hmm, let's do it this way. Who wants to keep the budget under zero? Up or down? So, I've got two ups, so you want to keep it at zero. Bob, you don't want to keep it at zero?
No.
Zero.
Wait, what? I think I'm confused.
How you ask.
All right. So, all right, let's go it this way. Who wants to increase the bu...
Keep it simple.
Who wants to increase the budget to zero? We're under zero now. Who wants to, am I right?
I think you're saying, who wants to increase it to zero by adding the...
Yes, thank you.
Computer science teacher.
Thank you. Thank you, Adam. Who wants, did you hear that? So, who wants to do that? Up or down?
I'm confused. I don't have a problem increasing the position, but I would still like to take a look at whether...
Oh, yeah, we're still...
Yeah. But, all right, so no one has a problem in going to zero? Dan?
I would say not go above zero.
Not go above zero?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, nobody has a problem going to zero?
Right.
Okay. All right. What's the third part?
Okay, that's it. It sounds like people would like the computer science position put back in, as long as it doesn't put us above zero. Okay. That's what I'm hearing. All right, so I know...
One other question on that, Katie. We don't really have to do that position until a couple of years, right?
Well, no, it is a need now.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So, Alfreda, you don't mind that I pass out your...
No.
Okay.
I did pass it out. I did send it to everybody, but...
Yeah, it's just easier to have in paper.
I didn't have a chance to...
People like to have paper.
I brought a couple extra in case somebody needed.
I already printed them.
Thank you. Thanks, Adam. All right. So, I would like Adam to, Adam would like to make a few comments regarding the information so that we get some clarification on why things appear the way they do.
Yeah. So, just to have some clarifying comments before we dive into the specifics, the comparison, Alfreda, in your email, were between the FY '19 actual and the FY '20 request, and obviously, we're still in FY '19, so those numbers were, you know, as those lines happened to be as of yesterday, when the reports were printed. So, it's not a picture of a complete year.
No.
So, I just wanted to clarify that those are the numbers in the left column, are where those lines stood as of yesterday when I ran those reports. It's not a budget to budget. It's an actual, as of yesterday, to next year's budget. So, it's important to have that context before we dive into it.
New coding, changes in codes.
And some of the questions also, I think will be clarified in that we had some coding changes. Something that I look at every year is, are our codes accurate, are they where they need to be for DOE reporting? Can we improve any of them? And so, there was some of that, particularly around summer school.
Where all that, we saw a strand of zeros.
Right.
Correct.
So, I think your first question under OLT was, you know, what happened to the summer school? And essentially, it just got moved to different codes.
Okay. So, you'll see that, you know, Adam, just like you're asking if we go line by line, Adam's going code by code and making sure is the items that we're budgeting in the correct code. Sometimes, you'll see a line go zero, you'll see a line go way up, and you'll say, "What happened?" Well, you have to track it to, "Oh, I see $45,000 down here. This code's up 45. There must have been a code change." Okay? But, I can see where that's confusing. Peter, can you join us to go over the OLT questions? So, we're going to, we're going to the second page of the email, and does everybody, would everybody like a printed version of what? Yes. All right. So, that you can go to the pages referenced. The first thing, I just want people to note on the 2008 to 2019. In 2008, we're not sure why there was an 800 and 2,000, because we don't have the budget report from back then, but iPads went in in 2011.
Oh, there's two. Thank you.
Sorry. That's okay.
My fault.
A little hyped up, okay? There's a lot going on.
Right.
Okay. So, if I seem a little tense or intense, that's why.
And I agree with Katie, the same here.
Yeah, we're trying to juggle a lot of balls. Okay. So, in 2011 is when the iPads came in. I just want people, because the question was, is this when you did the classroom computer start up in 2008? That did not happen in 2000, until 2011, we brought in the iPads for kindergarten. In 2013, the MLTI computers came into the high school. So, when we had the option to buy computers for the high school, that's when it was approved by the school committee to do that, and that was in 2013. That's where you see a bump up. Then, as many, as Peter explained in his prior presentation to the school committee this year, is that to be cost effective, to be more efficient, we have gone from not one-to-one in the elementary, we've gone to shared iPads, to be more cost-effective. And we have lease payments for our technology. So, Peter, can you kind of go through what ACTM does, because there was questions about ACTM, and then there was questions on your repair and maintenance, and there was question on Power School?
Sure. So, ACTM is the Association for Computer Technology Educators of Maine. It is a professional development organization for teachers who are using technology in their classrooms, for technology specialists, technology directors. It's also a buying consortium that we use to purchase software and some hardware at considerable discounts. Our actual ACTM membership as a district is $50 a year, and we save a lot more than $50 a year by being part of it. That line, that $4,000 for training, is not necessarily going to ACTM. That is for technology staff training, so it's for recertifications for our technicians so that they can work, do warranty work on devices. This year, it paid for my new data specialist to get training in Power School. It's paid for me to be trained in our mobile device management solution before, it's whatever the technology support staff needs to be certified to do their jobs, basically. So, and we do also pay for a group of 10 teachers, one from each school, to go to the fall ACTM conference, which is $100 per teacher. And that is really essential professional development for teachers, how to use technology effectively, to respond to the concern around students spending in order amounts of time teaching themselves electronically. As a technology educator myself, I would regard that as being a misuse of technology, and I think the way to get around that is to provide more and better professional development for teachers so that they use the technology effectively. So, I would argue that that $1,000 to send teachers to the conference is a small price to get a person at each school to have that training that they can then bring back and share to their staffs at their schools.
That is, I think, I appreciate that, knowing that part of it. And my question, follow-up question was going to be like, did you do this in a group at a time, not all of them at the same time? And does this continue? Does that training need to continue? Does it keep moving, and you have to keep the groups?
The conference training or the technology staff training?
The ACTM.
So, that's, it's, we, each year, we go to the schools and we say, "Pick a person to go."
Right.
And the expectation is that that person will go, and they'll attend sessions, and then they'll bring that information back and share it at a staff meeting.
That's good.
Could we be doing more technology professional development? I'm always going to answer yes to that question, but I'm, you know, I'm competing for teacher time with all of the other initiatives that we have going, that we have to do training for, and...
That's why your instructional coaches are very important.
Absolutely essential, because they're able to work with teachers one-on-one in their time that they have available during their regular schedule, as opposed to trying to pull a whole staff together and do a professional development workshop kind of a thing, which that's where it's really challenging, because we have so many other things that we need to do PD with teachers on.
Moving target.
The next one, just so people understand a little bit, is the repair maintenance that is 3,000. The year, last year, it was reduced by 7,000.
From 7?
From 7,000 down to 3,000. So, we look similar, it's line by line, we are doing reductions.
No. What I've used is actual, okay? So...
Right. But, and that's what you're going to discuss, is why...
And what we did at the end of last year, when we hadn't used that for actual repairs, we used some money to replace the oldest LCD projectors that we had, which are, I think, I want to say they're possibly around 12 years old, some of those old LCD projectors. They fail on a pretty much weekly basis. We get a work order in, and a projector has basically expired, and we, at that point, replace it. So, last year, what we did was, we waited until the end of the year. We made sure that we, you know, we were okay to spend that money, and then we replaced the oldest 10 projectors in the district, which isn't enough. We could be doing a lot more than that on a yearly basis, frankly, but we figured that's what we can do. We could also have some on-hand as spares, so that when one fails, a teacher isn't waiting while we reorder. We can put the spare in place. Because, you know, when you're in a classroom setting and you've got used to having that technology and it fails, it tends to put a bit of a crimp in your instruction, because now you can't project anything.
Yes, definitely.
Do you want to explain the maintenance for tech-related at 56?
Yes. That one, actually, last year, if we look at our expenditure last year, we were at 54,000 at the end of the year. We are having a good year so far, at 21,339, but what I do know is that as we collect laptops at the end of the year, we will have a bunch of repairs to do. There is going to be damage to those MLTI laptops that we don't know about yet. We'll find it, and we'll have to do those repairs as quickly as we can, so we can get them done before the end of the fiscal year. I think the repair account is one of those that, it's very difficult to budget, because, you know, you can't predict when something will fail, and I think it would be irresponsible to not have enough money to cover kind of the worst-case scenario. I would love to have some money left over at the end that we can, you know, turn back, but it all depends on how things go, because it is a contingency account.
True.
The next one is the software-related, 64,888.
So, that one, we added Frontline, which is an HR, and Adam, jump in on this, because you were more involved than I was, but this is, it's an HR onboarding tool that allows us to be much more efficient about the way we bring teachers on board and do all of the paperwork that we legally have to do when they come on board. And I think it...
You got it exactly.
Oh, okay. So, that, so that added, there was also an increase in our cost for Profund, which is our business office software.
We just have to remember that we do not have an HR department or per se, so anything that we can use to help facilitate an HR is good. Thank you.
We were, we were using Google Forms, which was a horrendously challenging process to keep track of, and this does it much more effectively. So, there's an increase in Profund, which is our business office software. Our Lightspeed content filter, which is what keeps all of our students out of the dark side of the internet, as it were, increased in price. It actually increased last year, but they didn't tell us until after our budget was done, and I said, "Look, guys, I can't do it." So, they gave us a break and let us have the old price for last year, but then, obviously, this year, we had to pay the new price. And what we're paying for Lightspeed is actually quite a bit less than most of the other offerings in that market. I mean, we're paying, I think our, this year, it was $12,000 for the year. Some of the other offerings in there are literally tens of thousands of dollars, and I've seen them up to $100,000.
This is, HR is another whole department. Wouldn't it make more sense if we could try to do something to collaborate with the city, with our HR department, with the city? I mean, wouldn't that take a lot off your back?
Honestly, that, that's not something that I deal with, the HR side of things. I mean, that's something that I think...
Well, the HR department right now, the school department has five contracts that we oversee, and that's between Michelle and I and Diane Blay. And so, to add that to your two city employees with the number of contracts they have, Peter, yours here, would, could you handle the teachers?[1334.54][1334.54](laughter) Ed techs, the custodians, the bus drivers, the... No. Yeah. Because we, Diane Blay meets regularly with Chris Mao to talk about how to support each other, so we do that collaboration, just so you know. But, we, we cover as many contracts as the city does. But, that question's come up, and we've looked at it.
Yes.
We've looked at it many, many times. Many times, yeah.
That department tomorrow, Adam and I, on another issue, so we do collaborate.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving along.
The tech-related hardware, can you talk about the server needs and the lease payments?
Well, actually, that first line, the tech-related hardware, that is entirely our lease payments. That is our lease payment for our MLTI laptops, which next year will be the fourth year. It is the lease payment for our K6 shared iPads, and it is the lease payment for our K6 teacher laptops. This is one of the things that Adam and I worked really hard to get that moved from CIP to the, to the budget where it actually belongs, because they, I mean, can I say we use them for 10 years? Yeah, we do, but should we? No, we shouldn't. So, I think that was, that's why the increase there, and those are lease commitments, so we really don't have a whole lot of choice on that particular line, anyway. The Power...
We'll talk about that. We will spend that full amount. We have another payment.
Yes. We, we will. We will, we will expend the budgeted amount in that line this year, yes.
The 432?
Yeah.
The 432 or the 299?
Because those are lease payments. Yeah.
This year's budget is 426,000. We've spent 299, but we will spend the full 426. There's another lease payment coming.
Some, some of the lines had said it was an, like, certain things were annual payments, and if you saw something already there, and you assumed it was already made, if it's annual, it's once a year, so that's why I put those down.
That's good.
And that line has multiple annual payments, so that's why.
Okay.
Now, the question, Power School upgrade for dual grading was no additional costs. What you're seeing for the upgrade is the server. Do you want to explain that?
Right. So, the, the cost of Power School, its annual licensing cost is, has been the same, and the move to using Power Teacher Pro, which is the gradebook component of Power School, didn't increase our cost at all. That was always part of the core product. We were choosing to use Empower instead of that. We moved to use that, and it didn't increase our annual cost for Power School as, as a software license. Next year's budget does contain an upgrade, hardware upgrade for the servers that are running Power School. It runs on two servers. One runs the database, one runs the actual application that the teachers log into when they go on the web, and parents and students can log into as well. The servers we're currently running on are six years old, which in server terms is pretty ancient. We are at a point where I can no longer have Power School upgrade us to the most current version, because the servers will no longer support it. We've actually, we upgraded those servers, we added memory and processor upgrades to the existing hardware a couple of years ago in order to be able to keep them going, rather than buying entirely new. So, we've gotten six years of life out of them, and frankly, to have something that is as mission-critical as Power School, running on hardware that is that old, is it, you know, I'm beginning to think that I'm going to start losing sleep over it. So, it's time to, it's time to upgrade those and have them be running modern servers that we, we have, you know, a warranty on and that will run the latest software from Power School.
And you have to use servers for that? It can't go to the cloud, or...
It's actually more expensive.
Okay.
The cloud-based version of Power School would increase our annual cost for Power School by about $10,000.
Oh, okay.
Now, if some, if you said, "Okay, you can have $10,000 a year to put it into the hardware for Power School, I could have gold-plated servers down there." It is, you know, when you take the $12,000 cost for upgrading the servers, we've gotten six years out of them, that's about $2,000 a year. It's a pretty inexpensive way to do things. I am frankly a lot more comfortable having my student data housed inside of our network, inside of our firewall, rather than in the cloud. I think it's more secure, and it's safer in terms of us being able to access it if we don't have the internet or something like that.
I've heard both ways, so I don't know which way to go.
Well, and we, we do, we do, we do look at that. I mean, we, for a very long time, we were maintaining our own email server with First Class here in the district, and we kept looking at it, "Is it time to move to Gmail? Is it time to move to Gmail?" And we finally did make that, that decision. And so, we, you know, we do look at that continuously. The same thing with, with ADS Profund. We looked at that. It would be a whole lot more expensive to put that in the cloud, plus then we're at the risk of, okay, if we're having an internet outage, we don't have access to our business office software.
And actually, we discussed the cloud earlier on. I think you were here for a workshop, and I asked the question specifically, because I had heard the city was in the cloud.
Mm-hmm.
And I, and you had said the same thing, that it was more expensive and that you wanted to protect the children.
We've, we've moved a lot of things to the cloud, and we will continue to evaluate that on a, on a year-to-year basis. But it's one of those things where you, you really have to look at the cost benefit for each thing.
Okay, is there any other questions?
Any other questions for technology before we move?
The next one, the Power School.
That's, Shelley's going to answer that.
I was just going to ask if she could answer.
She's coming next.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
Just to clarify for people that don't have the handouts. So under the technology, all of the lines except for the equipment, because those are lease payments, we have looked at the FY nineteen revised, and we have reduced for the FY twenty request.
Where Peter thought it needed to come down, it went down, and then he hadn't, he always says, you know, when he looks at it, "I, I, I need three thousand in case for training," yes.
Right, so I just wanted to point that out, that we have evaluated those lines and decreased. So, thank you.
So we didn't see any way to reduce unless you want to, you know, take five hundred here, or, you know, and then we do, so. Is there anybody that wants to reduce those lines? We all all set, Alfreda? For a technology. What line were you hoping to reduce? Well, I'm looking at the one that would have the largest amount of discrepancy between what you really need to spend and what you've asked for. And I'm relying on Adam because if he says we're not completely actual yet, is there a line there that you'd recommend that we're able to reduce somewhat? I'm look, I'm looking at like.
Yeah, I mean, we're in mid-April, so I would not look at any of these as being complete figures for the year. And based on the review that Katie and Pierre and I did this afternoon, I wouldn't recommend reducing any of these lines.
So is everybody all right with this? Thumbs up?
So we're moving on to the OLT. Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Talk, she, she, we have reviewed the questions. So she's going to talk about Power School annual license and the use of Empower at elementary level.
Do you want me to start with that one?
That's where you're starting. Thank you.
Okay, so the question is using Empower at elementary?
Do we still need to use Empower?
So the reason that we, we haven't made a change away from Empower in elementary is because some of the features that Empower provides us that Power School doesn't. Primarily, the best example I could give is that it's very easy to track for teachers, to see student data in Empower and see what they've completed, where they are in the progression, where they need to go next. You can't see that as easily in Power School. Power School is very dependent on the schedule because it's a scheduler. And we just don't build the same kind of complex schedules in elementary that we do in secondary. There's sort of like a schedule that is like, I'm with my homeroom teacher. And we know that elementary classrooms change regularly. And you can do that more easily in Empower than you can in Power School. And quite frankly, our secondary teachers, when they want to access a scale for a learning target, are going into Empower still. Because those are not in Power School. The scales in their full structure are still housed in Empower. And if we didn't have it for elementary, the secondary teachers wouldn't be able to access those. So that's why we have not made a move in elementary at this point.
Any questions for Shelley? So Shelley, can you kind of do an overview, since two thousand eight, you know, you, you were the curriculum, you started becoming the curriculum director, and I was the assistant superintendent. What are some areas that have increased your budget so far?
So one of the things that was, that came into, impacted my budget after I came down from Edward Little, a big component was RTI, Response to Intervention. Katie actually was in the role of assistant superintendent and wrote the district plan for that. It was a state mandate. So that impacts my budget because it has implications for universal screening tool. That would be what we use right now, STAR. And there's a question about that on this budget, on these budget questions. So that has fallen to my budget. We didn't have that before. That's a large expense. And also, when you start identifying students who need interventions, that results in a need for intervention materials. And in, in my experience, one of the best ways to have a good variety of materials for students who have a variety of needs for intervention is to look to some technology, technological interventions. So that's impacted my budget as well.
What year was that? Remember that?
Two thousand eight, two thousand nine, maybe, is when.
But as, as the devices came in in two thousand eleven, more of the devices, teachers were asking for iXL, for example. If you've heard, if you've been in schools, oh, our children are on iXL or reading A to Z for the primary. So as teachers have been exploring different apps, we put some of the cost in the building budgets. But Shelley also had costs if there's another, they, we work to see how we can be most cost-effective on how to pay for that. So sometimes, so you explained to me, what's planned for next year is to look at a return on investment. Which apps are being used, because we can pull that information, which we do. Which apps are teachers now leaning towards? We want to make sure our kids all have a common experience. So if we have a school that's really like, wow, we're using this app a lot, we talk to the other schools. Have you all tried that app? Is this something you're interested in? Because depending on a teacher's comfort level with technology or, or use, Shelley's kind of the backup. Her budget is kind of the backup. So when a building principal's saying, you know, "I don't have the money in my budget," they call Shelley. "Do you have some dollars to help me do this?" And that's why we have money in Shelley's budget to support teachers when there may be something they didn't plan for in the reg, in their building budget. So it, what's hard with budgets is we are planning in January, December, a whole year ahead. And things change, and people say, "Hmm, I really wish we had money for X." We want to honor teachers' requests, and it's hard for us to honor it if we, if we don't have money. Where Shelley can say, "Yes, I think I have five hundred dollars to support you to do this." So I know you and I have discussed that.
So that would be one, RTI. The other one that's been a shift, I think in my experience, is a, a large part of the budget when I came down here used to be textbooks in a traditional kind of format. And Dan Chafeli, who was my predecessor, one of them, there used to be a very structured process for making sure that, it, there was like a ten-year replacement cycle for textbooks at the high school. And I discovered pretty quickly, once we had MLTI come in, we had devices that the department heads were saying to me, "We want a class set of textbooks, but we really want you to spend your money on digital resources for us because those update regularly, and the textbook doesn't." So once I have the textbook and the information updates, I'm stuck with this textbook for ten years. And there isn't anything I can do about it. So it is not so common for me to, to buy new textbooks, not because that's what I want, not because that's my choice, but because the resources that are most usable tend to be technology-based, because they update regularly.
I did notice you had a lot of the textbooks, you know, a lot of.
Yep, and I can tell you exactly what that's about.
Good, and I, and I'm sure it backs up your, your targets and stuff, so.
Exactly.
Thanks. Yeah, go ahead and.
And you did buy a textbook recently, the Spanish, was it?
Yes, so do you want me to jump, do you want me to start just going through these?
Now, now, yes.
Okay.
Good.
So I think Adam already explained the summer school issue, those first two, page one and page three. That's just a coding change. So if I go to the, the question about STAR, you'll see page eleven listed there twice. STAR has increased its cost, not significantly, but it has gone up. And, but the other reason that there's a change there is that I built money into my budget so that the high school could administer the PSAT to ninth graders and tenth graders. So that we would have, that has administrate, given in ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade. Because the company has done a lot to make it a continuum of a score, so you can compare the PSAT score to the SAT score now. And with the SAT being our eleventh grade assessment, we felt that was important. And then what happened last year is that Melmac gave schools money to pay for that, which I didn't, we didn't know was going to happen. So we didn't end up spending that money because Melmac funded it. I had to put it in my budget again for next year because we don't yet know whether Melmac's going to fund it again. So that's the explanation in that line. Repair and maintenance of software. I actually, that has a whole bunch of different things in it. Katie already mentioned one big piece of it, which is some intervention technology materials like iXL and/or reading A to Z RAS kids, which we use in elementary. This is where Naviance is, which is the software we're using at the high school. It's giving high school students access to SAT prep, to career interest surveys, learning style inventories. The guidance counselors are using it for college materials. It's College Search, it's like an aspirations kind of program that we've brought in. That's been in there for a couple of years. Eye Observation, the platform, that's another impact to my budget, the PE PG system. I have Library World, which is the circulation program for the elementary and middle school libraries. So those are all in that budget, that part of the budget. It actually, I'm pretty sure, is down from last year. The actual, yes, so the amount that I requested last year is higher than the amount I requested for the coming year. The actual that you have here is the amount that's been spent, which is less than I requested last year. That's why I adjusted it for next year. So this adjustment that you see here is a result of my current actual expenditure. I lowered it for next year. Okay, general bid supplies. Just to be clear about what that is, those are things like, for me, those are materials I might use for training sessions or PD when I do it in the district. Years ago, that general bid supply line was just my OLT materials. A few years ago, Gifted and Talented, which is another one of my budgets that falls under my direction, they, because that budget is reimbursed by the state, GT is a reimbursed budget. Every year you have to submit your budget, the state approves it. And a few years ago, they all of a sudden said, "We won't reimburse general supplies." So what we did at that point is we put general bid for Gifted and Talented into my OLT budget. So half of that is what the GT teachers told me they needed for general bid money. So we have not at this point expended the three thousand that we requested last year. But I, that isn't to say we won't before the year's out. And like Peter said, it's one of those lines that I don't always know what I'm going to need for PD supplies. Some years I need to order extra chart paper because that's the PD. So it's one of those lines I have to estimate. So I, so the request is what I requested last year. The next one, page eighteen, consumable instructional supplies. You'll see that, that FY nineteen actual is zero right now. I have thirteen thousand dollars in there for this year. I will spend every penny of it. I haven't spent it yet because I'm working with teachers right now on social studies curriculum. And I do not yet know what resources I need to order for that curriculum development. So the request for next year is very similar to the request for this year because just very recently, the legislature passed a revision to the main learning results in science and in social studies, which means revisions to our curriculum units in science and social studies in K-12. And so this money that's in there for next year will be to buy new curriculum supplies for science and social studies K six. And that's my ballpark, because I haven't developed the units yet, and I don't know what the materials are.
Any questions for Shelley?
I'm almost done.
At this point? Any questions at this point?
Well, I just, if Adam After can give us the revised FY nineteen figures, because I'm, unless I can't find it on this.
So I can compare.
They're in the, they're in the column immediately to the left of the actual.
But the pages aren't corresponding. Is, are other people?
So I think, Faith, you have the summary instead of the detail. The wrong one got passed out.
Okay, sorry. I thought I was losing it.
That explains it. Sorry about that.
I can't find it. The other ones, right, we have OLT summary, but we don't have the whole thing. We have the summary.
You passed it.
Yeah, you passed it out. Okay, thank you. I'm not losing it. I'm like, are you finding it?
Column three, one year prior revised, is what you want, and column four is what corresponds to these numbers.
I just didn't have the right paper. Thank you, Adam.
So Faith, for that one. So you know, for that one, right in my current budget, the request was thirteen-two, I think.
Oh, here, this one goes to Bob.
And the next request is fifteen, so. I just haven't spent any of the shares' money because stuff's in development.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Glad you asked.
So the question regarding textbooks, we are replacing, we're starting a two-year process to replace French textbooks at the high school. We also are replacing AP psychology textbooks, I think, off the top of my head, something in social studies. The other thing we did is we have, I've always had money in my budget for the high school library, for books for the high school library. And a few years ago, we started sharing that money with AMS library. And this year, what we did is we broke it into two separate lines. So I allocated some money for AMS specifically, some separate money specifically for Yale. And that will be spent as well. Let's see.
And now you're on staff recognition.
Now, yeah, staff recognition. So we, we do not have to rent space for events.
That was written in there, so I was wondering, why do we rent space?
We, it might be a holdover. When we used to have really big trainings.
I didn't recognize.
Yeah, sometimes when we used to have big trainings, we would have to, like, maybe use USM LA and pay for that. We haven't had to do that for a while.
I've gone to them, and I'm going like, these are the schools we should be paying our own schools.
No, what we do use that line for, though, is it, like, for example, in August before our teacher workshop days, we have either a two- or three-day new teacher orientation. We like to provide them lunch. So we have places in the year where we do that kind of thing, so. We're going to celebrate the end of the first year for our new hires coming up soon, and we're going to give them some snacks, things like that. The rest of the items on this list are Gifted and Talented budget items. So I will remind you that they are all reimbursed budget items. And then I will just say to you that the reason that the request is up for AVEC, AVEC is that regional Gifted and Talented program that includes Lewiston, Turner, SAD fifty-two, Sabadis, and Lisbon, and us, everybody but Poland, I think. And the reason that the request is up is that we've been talking about whether or not we need to raise the tuition. Because of, for a lot of years, there was, there was some carryover, AVEC had some carryover. And they've, that group has used up its carryover. And it's impacted the number of sessions they can hold in the year. So there's been some talk about, do we want to increase the tuition? So I put the request in so that if that happened, we could cover it.
So tell me the, the communities again, the schools in the region.
It's Lewiston, Auburn, SAD fifty-two, Lisbon, and RSU four.
Two, four. I didn't think we were Lisbon, but, okay, thank you.
And there are four programs that are offered. We have eight students that go to each of the four programs.
And they are, what are they?
There's math, science. There's young writers. There's contemporary issues. And there's an arts program.
And what?
Arts.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Sound good.
Consumable instructional supplies, that is, I, I'm pretty sure Marie Dosty, who's our, the team leader for GT, increased that line because they have some plans for some additional activities, like field trip activities for next year for GT.
Yep, that's good.
Dues and fees, that one has increased because we wanted to make sure to put in for an additional OM team. OM is one of the categories in that dues and fees, and that specifically was her note. And then the last one is, that's actually the total of that budget. So that would be representative of all the lines in the budget.
Yep, okay. The additional OM team, I know there's always fundraising going on because I'm always donating for the OM team, so why should they be fundraising if we pay for it?
They fundraise when they win and they're going to another competition. The money that we have is the money for their registration as a team. Yeah, their initial registration. And then sometimes that dues and fees is also spent on, if there's a field trip that has a cost for admission or something, that would be in dues and fees as well.
Thank you.
More questions for OLT?
Oh, I don't think so.
Everybody okay with it?
Just like the unfilled positions?
Yeah, we're, we're, I just wanted to let Shelley go.
Everybody thumbs up for OLT?
Yep.
Bob?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Shelley. Thanks.
Of the unfilled, fifteen unfilled positions, there are four teacher retirements, one guidance counselor, and one ed tech position. So of the fifteen unfilled positions, six make up retirements.
The thing about the retirement ones, I, I noticed that you put them all middle of the road. When people retire, they're making a lot more money. And I would, I would assume that you would bring that down for some of them. I mean, to have all of them be fifty-five thousand, you know, as a ballpark, couldn't you go down somewhat?
We did.
You did?
That's what I explained. We went from MA, from MA step ten to MA step six. We just made that adjustment. That's how we just put those positions back.
I missed that.
Okay, so we all sat on that one? Everybody okay with, with unfilled positions? Bob?
The legal, the legal costs, we have legal costs built in in other cost center. And Adam, do you want to explain what you did this year?
Sure, we have legal costs under system administration and under special ed. And what I did this year is I simply shifted ten thousand of it from system administration to special ed, just reflecting what we'd spent to date. So that budget increased from ten thousand to twenty thousand under special ed. Then the, the system administration line went down by the same amount. And just for reference, year-to-date, special ed is at twenty-two thousand. So the request of twenty is actually a little bit less than where we're at right now. The request of 20 is actually a little bit less than where we're at right now.
So, all of the legal is in special ed, all of the legal?
No, only special ed related. In fact, when we get the bills, the special ed ones come separately, so we can be sure to code them to the appropriate line.
So, how many lines again do we have for legal?
Two.
Two. One is in the regular.
Yeah, one is in system administration.
And that is what again?
And one.
That is what? That one, the regular administration is?
System administration.
System administration.
Yeah, how much is that?
I have to look it up. The special ed is now at 20.
Now at 20, yes, I saw that.
I'll get that for you in just a minute.
Yep.
Okay, while you're getting that, how about, is there anything else that anybody wants to ask here? Any other questions, any other concerns? And I'm not rushing us, but we are on a tight schedule.
We have 10 minutes.
We have 10 minutes.
If there are more questions.
Any questions?
Do legal expenses go down next year?
Why? Why do you think, Bob?
Why? Because we had a thing we discussed in executive session.
Okay, excuse me, yes.
It's not going to be around anymore.
However, however, Bob, we are in the middle of negotiations and sometimes we do have to bring in a legal expert for negotiations.
Okay.
I mean, we always want to keep our legal fees down, but as, just remember, every legal call can save thousands of dollars. So, you know, I would like to say nothing will happen next year that causes us to call an attorney, but that would be really not being smart.
And we try to learn from one experience to the other experience.
Exactly.
So, if we ask an attorney this question.
Right.
When this question comes again, we have a basis to go forth from.
It's like, right, tonight, we have our attorney here tonight to discuss the bond for the new high school.
And I'd like to go on record, I understand when we do need legal consultation, a lot of time is specialized, and you have to hire a attorney that's in that specialization. But otherwise, in that, I'd like to see us use local attorneys.
Actually, we use Drummond and Woodson, and they are experts in, in school law and legal things, and they have done well with us. They have kept us out of some trouble. They have helped us other, they've done well.
So, yeah, right, Peter Family is my contact at Drummond Woodson, and on May 8th, he will be here to run the executive session that will be happening on May 8th at 6 o'clock. So, whenever we have a legal issue with, with general, not special education, we go to Peter Family. If there's a something Peter Family can't handle, he will assign us an attorney in their office that knows school law around a particular issue. When we have a special education question, we have a couple of attorneys that we contact at Drummond Woodson. But Peter Family is assigned to us.
Are any of them local?
Peter, the Drummond Woodson office is in Portland.
That's not local.
No.
It is by the way mayors would like to be.
The, the legal services question, the amount in the current budget is 70,000 under system admin. Next year, it's 61,800. I did remember, I did increase overall by 1,800, which I think was 2%.
61,800 in the system.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else anybody wants to look at or discuss?
Another question. Now, I have been asked by two councils to, if you would like another meeting, so we would need to do Tuesday. Due to calendar and schedule and so forth, I know it feels a little earlier, but the first Wednesday of May is the first. That's what's causing it to be a little bit earlier. But in order to stay on track and to move our budget to city council for approval on May 14, I want to say 14th, it's probably not, is it 8th, 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, it is 13th?
13th.
Whatever the second, second Monday is when they approve it. So, we have to have that timeline in order to be on referendum absentee ballot course. This isn't the superintendent trying to hurry us through it. It's a timeline that needs to be done in order to get to referendum. So, if the school committee would like another meeting, Monday, we cannot do, we're at city council, but Tuesday, we could have another meeting if there are more budget questions. You know, you've done a lot of work, Alfreda, however, if there is, if you're looking to reduce the budget 100,000 or 50,000 or 10,000, it would be nice if you would say that. And if everyone agrees, then we can work and look at those lines that we believe we could reduce, rather than you asking me whether it could come down 500,000. I don't know what the goal is unless you have a goal and you could share it with the rest of the group.
Would you like to share it with us, what your goal is?
Well, I would like to see a little bit more of a reduction, but I also would like to visit all of the other, the areas that I did not have time to do for tonight.
So, you, you want, we all thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
On a zero increase. So, you're saying that you want to still look at this to see if we can go underneath it more?
Just to see if there are some, a little bit more, right.
But we had an opportunity to go underneath it by $68,000 before we gave a thumbs up.
Correct.
So, so I guess what I'm saying is, where can we cut? Mr. Maniglia, are you the other school committee that wants to go over this?
Hmm, I think we've done a lot tonight.
So, are you comfortable in not having a meeting on Tuesday?
Right, I am comfortable with that.
Anybody else not, anybody else, does anybody else other than Mrs. Fornia feel that we should have a meeting on Tuesday night? You know, continue please with your questions.
Yeah, I can answer questions.
And when you send out the questions, please send them to all of us with the answers back to us.
Yes, absolutely.
On it, so that we all.
You did receive them from the, what, this?
Well, what I'm saying is.
She's Katie's answer, so we can review them.
Both.
I want to see both.
Her response, right, exactly.
Right, because we're not going to be in a meeting. So, if you send them, I'll send out the answers before next Wednesday because you're voting on the budget next Wednesday.
The only missing piece is not public, so the transparency piece, that's all.
What, what transparency?
What transparency piece?
Well, in other words, if we're talking about the budget, you know what I mean? We should be doing that.
But no one else want, I didn't see anyone else want to continue discussion, but if you need discussion to vote on Wednesday, if you have questions in order for your vote next Wednesday, I'm more than open to answering them and they can hear the answers.
Okay.
But if you're not, you know, I think that's what you're asking, is you want to be comfortable voting next Wednesday, correct?
I do, I do, because I'm not comfortable voting.
And I, and I hope you all have taken your wonderful budget book that the business office has prepared for us, and you have reviewed it. I did, I reviewed it, and then I compared it to the.
Going to eat meat next Wednesday?
Excuse me?
Next Wednesday, yeah, next Wednesday is a regular meeting. It's your first meeting of the month, and so, yes, you'll be voting to submit.
And will we have time at that meeting to go over any budget at all?
No, because you are voting for the articles. So, if you came in and said, could you reduce this $5,000, Adam has to go in, adjust the budget, redo the cost centers during the meeting. You know, you're, you're signing a paper that sends it to city council.
Alfreda, you're saying you would like to reduce this more?
A little bit more, yes.
How much more?
Why did you vote for the 68,000?
I'm not sure at this point, but I, I don't.
I beg your pardon, what did you say, Bob?
Why did you vote for the refunding the computer science teacher then?
Because I feel that with some savings in here, it would probably offset that. That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
All right, so we, we still have, we are not going to meet on Tuesday? Okay, because there was only one vote on it, I'm sorry, but there was only one vote to meet on Tuesday.
All right.
So, we will not meet on Tuesday. The budget that will be presented on Wednesday evening to us will be the budget that will go forth from us to the city council.
Correct.
On it.
Yeah.
And remember, when it goes to the city council, it goes as a bottom line.
Correct.
On it. So, they look at the bottom line of it.
Right.
They can't get into the, to the line items with us because that's our discretion and the superintendent's and her staff.
Thank you, you have three minutes before the joint meeting.
Adam?
I will email out to each of you tomorrow, updated budget reflecting the restoration of the computer science teacher. And those will all, all those updated reports will also go online tomorrow.
Okay, I'd just like to say one thing. We all have received the budget. It was all of, all up to us, each individual, to ask questions, to put questions to the superintendent and her staff on it. So, if you, if you didn't review it and you didn't have any questions, or you reviewed it and you didn't have any questions, then that's, that's it. So, thank you very much. Now, we're going to move into a joint meeting with the city council, a joint workshop.
Joint workshop.
With the city council.
Thank you.
We are on air, the mic's alive. So, welcome again. This is getting to be quite the experience to be here on it. So, we are happy that the school committee and the city council are meeting, and we're happy that the architects are in the audience, and we're very happy that the mayor is back from vacation.
I never take a vacation.
Okay, you just took a trip, okay.
When you're with kids, it's a trip.
Okay, a trip, okay. It's a trip. Okay, so, we're glad that we're, everybody is here tonight, and we're going to, are you gonna, who's leading? You, Katie, or you, Jason?
I'll lead off, yeah. And then, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over, and, you know, we have a limited amount of time here because we both, both bodies have meetings. So, first of all, I will state that, welcome and congratulations to the newest member of the school committee. I'm sorry, could you just say your names so everybody hears it? Because I can't remember your last name for the life of me, though I'm jet lagged.
Yeah, it's Brian Belknap.
Brian Belknap, Ward 4. Congratulations, welcome aboard. So, yeah. Moving along, and while I was, thank you. And while I was out for the week, I did have the luxury of four hours ahead, or behind time, or ahead of time. So, I got to watch your meetings on YouTube. Great. Lot of, lot of good fun there, while the kids are still sleeping. So, I did catch up on everything, and so, it kinda gave me a little bit of a different perspective. Turn to your head, wait for a second.
Yeah, they just came and sat down.
So, what I'm like to do right now is we're gonna, we'll take it back and talk about the new questions in a second. I'd like to turn it over to Katie for some comments. Superintendent Grandin?
Just so that things are moving quickly, because we're on a tight timeline. So, I really appreciate everyone's flexibility. I'm glad the mayor, we met with this morning to get him up to date, even though he was jet lagged, he, he was not, you know, the brain was moving. So, just so everybody knows that after the meeting on, what night was it?
Monday night.
Thank you. Monday night, those members of the building committee that were still here and other members who've been participating in that did meet. And, you know, as we've discussed, the building committee has had a big commitment into, to this design, what the parts of it were. So, we discussed, second question being about $1.9 million, pulling out 200 seats for the auditorium, performing arts center, the 100 parking spots, and the concession slash restroom facility that would be going near the stadium. So, that was discussed after the meeting. And then, this morning, we went through that with the mayor, the city manager, myself, Phil Kroll, and Bonnie Hayes to discuss, is there another compromise to get us to the point of getting to the two questions and getting to the referendum vote? So, Jason, do you want to explain what they have in front of them?
Absolutely. If you look at page 2 of the packet that you have, and I'm not sure if members of the audience have this.
There's, and I think, are there some copies on the table there? I didn't get one.
Yes, there are.
Okay, thanks, Andy.
Could I have one, please? Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Maybe they also need one here.
I did get one. There's an extra one.
And as you all read it, of course, please read it. This is nice, I don't, I don't think we all need a law degree to understand how it's written, but I want to go into a little background and why it was developed and kind of split the way it is. So, we looked at it this morning, and we looked at, and I, kinda having the benefit, I think, of being not in, not present, not in the room, and watching the meetings, and kinda pausing them, taking notes, and listening to what everybody have to say, and kinda gleaning out. A lot of people's good points, faith, great point when you don't want to pit in multiple questions, athletics against performing arts, okay? It's a very valid point, and once you step back and look at it, it makes a lot of sense. There's a lot of other good points made by school committee people, as well as city counselors, as well as the building committee, and I think we need to honor the work they've done. This allows us to kinda chunk the project out into two questions. Question 1 is the state share at $105 million, I'm rounding and change, plus the brick-and-mortar local share that will have the biggest impact upon potential square footage, architectural design, as well as features and functionality. For example, climate control, geothermal, specifically major components, and I'm talking geothermal at this point, that the state is picking up the lion's share of the cost in the form of reimbursement, that has a very quantifiable return on investment within, I believe, 1.8 years? Is that the revised number down?
Right.
I'm thinking less than three years is pretty outstanding.
Lisa, do you know, do you know if that was reduced beyond 1.8?
Because the costs have changed on the local side, it's about 1.1.
1.1 years' return on investment.
Again, so, great. Awesome. Even if it is two, it'd still be a very, very good, solid investment. Those are, as we consider, long-term decisions for the benefit of the entire city that I feel very comfortable in proposing, and hopefully, we all do, from our recommendations. I think we can all agree that investing a dollar and making $2 back in a year is a good thing, or two years. And as you can see in the base high school project description, it goes into a little bit more detail of what those local shares are, but they do come up to $5.5 million, okay? The second question would then go into enhancements, for the most part, enhancements that don't affect the lion's share of the footprint of the building. Sports complex, secondary turf field, and the performing arts center. Performing arts center, size-wise, could, but I didn't, as we talked about it this morning, we didn't think, and listening to what everybody said, we all have some different opinions on size of the performing arts center, or six lanes versus eight, and so forth, that it's really important at this point for the building committee to be respected in their decision-making process, but also simultaneously respect the citizens and the residents in pact 2, come election day on June 11th, I believe it is, for them to really be the final, not final, but the decider on whether or not that question, those enhancements, are what the community needs, okay, and should have. Also gives all of us time to gather even more detail, and then share this with the community through community forums, op-eds, so on and so forth, communication process on the value of everything, okay? So, we now have a window of time. If question 2, as the states, we're talking extra parking, auditorium, athletic field, everything that the school committee wanted, or recommended, I should say, not school committee, I'm sorry, the building committee, if there is a no, okay, and this is still worked, working out, and I know we've had dialogue with attorneys, and there might be a different twist to this, but if there, if the voters, the majority of voters, vote no on question 2, to put in place an exit poll, whether it be in the ballot itself as non-binding questions, or in a separate type of informational gathering, dig into the reasons why the no. Is it the performing arts center? Is it the stadium? Is additional parking? Is it just overall cost? How do we understand if they, again, this is a big if, but it's, I think it's important to cover our bases. If they do say no, why? So that we, as a deliberative body and the building committee, can go back and say, okay, question 2 failed. Fair enough. Why did it fail? We have data to show why it failed. Let's focus our energy on fixing those key or salient points, go back to a secondary election, and get it passed, or see what other compromise we can do. So, doing all that over the process or the course of the summer, allowing us to go back and, because I don't want to sit here and say, hey, maybe we should only have 800 seats in an auditorium, where the community truly desires 12. So, let's have the community speak on these. And when I say I, that's, those are just my statements and my thought process, they might not be shared by, by Committeewoman Hayes, or the superintendent, so forth.
And actually, it isn't.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd like to say that it was a non-binding list, or questions that we suggested today for informational purposes on it, sort of like the third question that would be asked on the school board, referendum, too high, too low, whatever on it. So, that would be kinda like that. The other thing is, I was distinctly under the impression that we were not touching brick and mortar on it. So, I guess I'm confused that if we're touching brick and mortar. If we're touching brick and mortar and taking it out of the first question, out of the state, okay, and what, we've got the geothermal and whatever, then that impacts the design of the school on it. So, I guess I'm concerned that we're taking the performing arts, which we agreed to say that it was, not an auditorium, we agreed to say that it was a performing arts facility on it, and we did not discuss, or I misunderstood it perhaps, that we were taking that brick-and-mortar part, which is a whole column in the school, out. We could conceivably have it removed on it.
Well, it wouldn't be removed, it would be diminished in size.
Well, it still will cost us money diminished in size.
So, if I could, just if I could wrap up, then we can come back to this.
Sure.
Committeewoman Hayes. So, when we're looking at this, there are gonna be, I, it would be probably wrong to ever assume that every one of us around this table tonight would not have reservations about one thing or another. We will. And this is a spirit of compromise, okay? When we compromise, when we mitigate a problem, or mediate a problem, there's always gonna be issues where we're not extremely happy with, but we can swallow it because we know it's the right thing to do, and overall, the project itself is important. I think we did, and we talked about it this morning, a very good job minimizing the potential impact of the footprint itself, other than, we did say, other than the performing arts studio. That's the one variable, because it's such a large dollar amount that we couldn't control, okay? But, I don't want to jump ahead two or three steps post-election to see if that's gonna be a deciding factor. In other words, you know, I'm hoping that over the next month and a half, we put some great work together, the residents overwhelmingly support, and feel good about this decision, even the ones who voted against this, feel good that their voices were heard, and that they actually had and were listened to. And I think that's really an important thing, because having a high school is important, it's critical, but also having great community goodwill and satisfaction with the process and the outcome, regardless of how you voted, is also a very important thing. So, almost like an election, which it is. So, that's, you know, this is where it stands right now, okay? And I just want everybody to think about this, that, you know, and this is one thing that became very, very evident when I was watching the, you know, what, seven and a half hours of meetings that you all had while I was gone. Thank you for that, by the way. Again, emphasize while I was gone, that, concession, that there was a lot of repetitive action, lot of, lot of heels in, standing our ground as an individual, consensus was fairly lacking, and I think at this point, it's time to bring consensus together on something that I think is good, that we can rally behind and get passed, and convey the message to the, to the residents of Auburn. So, that's, that's kinda where we're at right now. That's where, hopefully, while I was rambling there, you all had a chance to read it and read the language. And I do need a point of clarification, if I could, from, you know, Sue or the manager, on what exactly, on the first reading, we're approving, and on the second reading, again, the bonded amounts and the separated by questions, modifications to language, can that be done at a latter point?
Sue, you want to address that?
Just in case. I don't have any recommendations, but, just to be clear.
You can vote to amend. You can also do that during the second reading.
Second reading, okay. Thank you very much. So, are there any questions on this proposal before we, Mr. Manelli?
This question 2 here, does that cover everything? The turf fields, the auditorium, everything, or performing arts center?
I believe, yes, I'm gonna defer to Katie on this one.
Yes, it does. What's in the first question, and Jason, you said, so, when you got, when we went over this budget that you all received, that's what we did, we went through the budget paper. And so, the items in the, in the first question are the larger gym, the interior features, the climate-controlled geothermal run, and the additional local square footage that included the adult ed office and teacher workroom space that you saw in the design, that's in the first question. And the second question is the performing arts, the stadium, the additional parking, and the second turf field.
Auditorium.
Yeah, I already said that, yeah. And then landscaping is in the second question.
So, when you look at this thing, you're looking at A, B, E, I, J, L, right? A, B, E.
In the, in the second question.
Right.
Yes.
I, J, L.
Correct.
We'll all be moved to the second question.
Go ahead, Holly.
Thank you. I think it would be extremely helpful if sooner rather than later, question number one could say, this is what it includes. We know that we can look at ours and say the exact letter, but have a bulleted list or a numbered list for everybody, and I would hope that it would also be out there publicly, maybe the paper could be very specific about this, and question 2 will include this, because I look at it, and it's a little confusing.
Absolutely.
Can I have Jim, can we have our attorney?
So, Jim Saffron, can you come up? That's been building the question. We have Bill Stockmyer from Drummond and Woodson, who has been helping support, looking through the law lens on some other thing. But, because we talked about that, so, the, the.
But, I don't mean in this, I just mean.
Yeah, in the, in the base high, oh, you don't mean in the question?
I don't.
Okay, sorry.
A public.
Oh, yeah.
List that is easy to understand, that says, if you vote for question 1, this is what you're voting for, and this is what is not included. In question 2, this is what's included, and it can be a very straightforward list so that people really understand.
Right.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Right.
You were pointing at the question.
I mean, I, I, it's right here, just a matter of cutting and pasting.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, that's easy.
Do you have any, while we have you up here, you know, and I think you probably charge in 15-minute increments, so, I'm gonna keep you, keep you right there at 14 and a half. You have any questions? I know you whipped this together, I want to say, you know, thank you for you and your team for putting this together within three hours, I believe.
Yeah.
Do you have any comments or statements that you'd like to make around this?
No, I just followed the order Katie provided to me about what was in and what was out. We can certainly, you know, summarize it in different ways, but how she summarized it looks like it's pretty accurate, so.
With regards to having non-binding questions within the ballot itself, for example, if no on question 2, why?
Coming up for that.
We got, is that second chair coming in now?
That is the second chair.
Very good. No offense, second chair. Yeah, if we could just, again, I think, I think we're all understanding on how, what we want to do, the fallback, if you would, on this, and how do we understand why people are saying no, if they do? Again, this is only if, you know, this gets shot down, so to speak, at the polls. You know, what is the best course of action from a legal perspective in order to gather that intelligence?
So, I'm Bill Stockmyer, Drummond and Woodson. Starting from the assumption that the purpose of advisory questions is for the council and the school board, the, the city officials, if you will, to obtain important information from the voters. I thought a little bit today about what bothered me about advisory questions in this particular context, because in general, I think that's a good and fair thing to do, whether it's sending flyers out and ask people to fill them out and mail them back, whether it's an advisory referendum, whether it's filling out questions on a website and responding that way. And I think what it was, was that if this were to be done on the ballot, then essentially, people would be asked to provide information about the reasons for their vote, the very thing they're voting on in the voting booth while they're voting on it. There's actually a statute that prohibits an attempt to influence voters in the voting area or in the voting booth. It's illegal to do. Now, I don't believe that would be the intent here, and Jim and I spent some time talking about, well, how could this be fairly done? But, I think you would run the risk of the perception in the context of over $100 million in bonds being issued by the city, $15 million at local expense, probably the largest project in the history of the city, where people feel passionately one way or the other, and in the context of a successful referendum, and people, some people who voted no being upset about that, and wondering, why were we being asked in the voting booth about why we voted no, why was that happening? They might have the perception that that wasn't an attempt to influence them. And so, my only concern would be trying to ask those questions of the voters while they're voting.
So, if we could, on that, and that makes sense, thank you for the explanation. If we had a scenario in which people voted traditionally, you know, they grabbed their ballot, they went in the booth, voted, came back, put in the scanner machine, then they had the option, as they're going out, of filling out a second questionnaire, you know, completely optional, not in the booth with them, not there when they vote, but if they wanted to take this and go into a separate booth for even more privacy and fill that out, would that be applicable? Would that be okay?
My view of it would be that that would be fine. I'd recommend that everybody, however they voted, be asked, and that they not be asked how they voted, even anonymously outside, because they've already cast their vote, you know? So, one would have to think about, you know, what questions to ask, and what would the information generate? But, I don't, I don't think there's any reason that information couldn't be gathered outside of the voting booth from all the voters.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Do you have any questions with the attorneys while we have them up? No?
The other Jim? The other Jim, do you want to say anything about the bond questions, or anything?
About the form of the bond questions, or about the advisory questions?
The form of the bond question.
No, I'm, I, unless you want me to summarize them, I, I think that they are as they've been described.
Okay.
They, they break out the costs.
Yep.
You know, as you've heard, and I put the summaries together, so.
Right.
I like them, I like the way they are, if you guys like them, but I'm happy to take questions on them, so.
Any questions on this? Bob?
We do have a question. We have two questions put out to the public. If the first passes and the second does not pass, I think a question that came up the other night was, you know, the architect is working on a schedule, so, if the first passes, they're moving ahead to start design, specific design based upon that vote. If the second part of it doesn't pass, that means essentially everything is out that is in that part 2. So, it does involve a lot of square footage. So, I guess, question, you can't really go back to question 2 and ask for another vote. I think you're trying to say now, you try to renegotiate or redesign to bring something forth, and I guess it goes, the question to the architect, what's that going to do to our schedule?
I think there's two questions, Eric. Can we get confirmation that we can bring this alternate question to, if it does fail, back to a second vote? That's question 1. Question 2 is, what does this do to the architectural schedule if question 1 passes and question 2 does not on the first attempt? So, if you could answer at least the first portion of that.
Well, sure. You, you do have some certain timeframes from the day you get your concept approval, which has just happened, to get your referendum approval, and then to enter into your final construction contract. So, there's a little window, six to nine months respectively, to kind of accomplish those things. So, you, so you, you can send your question 2 back to the voters. You're duplicating some efforts there. Now, you're, you're kind of incurring kind of costs that may or may not be useful to the project, because in the meantime, you're certainly going to be redesigning your project in case question 2 never passes, and so, you now have plans that you could go get your design and funding approval, and then go out to bid. And if question 2 ultimately passes, then you'd have to kind of switch gears. And if question two ultimately passes, then you'd have to kind of switch gears back. So you're kind of, you're creating some work to accomplish kind of two paths as you're moving forward. As to what the schedule would be from the architect, I guess they would have to speak to what, how much time that would take and kind of when they would have sets of plans ready to kind of meet either schedule going forward, so.
Okay, so, follow up?
I think we need to spend some time, I think we need to recognize in detail what...
Okay, so here's, we're just asking questions at this point, can we come back to your statements?
Okay, so I guess the second, the second question we need an answer.
Architect, yes. Lisa, if you could.
Oh, we all need to swish together a little bit, so Lisa can join us.
Sorry.
Lisa, over there.
Right there, I think you need to be close, whether or not you want to be there, it's, that's up to you. Sometimes I like to take a step back, too, so.
So, Bob, your question was, what happens to the schedule?
Yes.
If question two doesn't pass?
Well, if a new referendum date is set.
If a new referendum date is set. So it would impact the amount of time we have to complete the design and keep the schedule, overall schedule as we've identified, without knowing, without having sat down with the scope items, we've just heard these today for the first time, without sitting down with those in great detail. We can't tell you exactly the timeframe that it would impact the schedule, but it would shorten the duration to where we have time to design the building and still execute the schedule that we've provided.
Can I ask a question? Lisa?
Yep.
The thing that jumps out at me is the fact that you want, I think the objective is to keep the brick and mortar together as it is in the design that you created.
Correct.
So my question is, what is the number of seats in the, in the Performing Arts Center? What is the least, I hope I ask this right, what are the, the least number of seats that we can list that will not impact the integrity of that wing of the building?
Right now, it's designed for 1,200, so any large chunks less than that impact the design of the building.
I thought that there were a certain number of seats that you could...
In increments.
In increments that you could, we could eliminate for now, that would leave that piece the same.
Well, every time you take seats out, it makes the bar shorter. So it doesn't keep the bar, and the bar never stays the same if you're taking seats out. We, I think, had addressed that if you take, I think we came up with 200 for every, was it 200 seats?
Mm-hmm.
There was a $500,000 savings. And it's not just the seats, it's the square footage associated with those seats. So it reduces that bar by that amount of room.
But what about the actual... If you look at the...
Footprint of the building?
Yeah.
So you, if you unbolted 500 seats?
Yes.
Yeah, I see your...
What's that, what's that oblong look like? Does that mean it gets smaller?
It gets smaller.
As far as the outside walls of the building?
Correct, it would come in. For, if we're removing that square, if we're removing, we say seats, it's not just the physical seat.
Mm-hmm, I realize that.
It's all the space and structure that goes around with that, that number of people.
And that means going back to the state for a redesign?
It would require some redesign. We, we believe, and I believe there's other conversations around this, that there are things we can reconcile with the DOE at the next phase. It doesn't necessarily take us back to concept approval.
Okay.
So it's not going through that whole process again.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
I do. Lisa, I've gone to all the school building committee meetings except for one, I think. What I remember Mark saying, and maybe Katie or other school building committee members can verify this, I remember him saying on a similar question that if you reduce the Performance Arts Theater down to 800 seats, that that doesn't change the, the integrity of the design. Does that sound correct?
The integrity, so the overall layout and adjacencies and things like that, if that's what we're calling integrity, that, that is correct. You will reduce the size.
Right, but it doesn't change the, the, the structure. We don't have to go to a redesign if we do something like that.
It changes the footprint. So anytime you take seats out, you have to change the footprint.
Right, I understand that, but it's not like we would have to go back to the DOE and say...
No, that's what we're saying, is those types of designs, we believe we can reconcile with them at the next step, because we're going to continue to have checkpoints with them all the way through construction.
Thank you. And one, just one other question. Is the funding from the DOE jeopardized if question two failed in any way, do you think?
I, I don't believe so. So what, the way that you've done the, the theater per se is based on the seats that the state allocates, and so you've taken the local portion out of that. So any of those figures are on the, the local items in that question.
There's a follow-up question to that. In order to understand what this, in question two, the 80, 8.97 million represents, A is...
You mean eight, eight million?
8.97 million.
8.9, yeah.
We've been told that that takes out auditorium total, so leaving just the, what the state would provide, 365 seats.
Mm-hmm.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's, could represent 10,000 square feet, because we're taking out essentially the tech shop, dressing room, the, the echo storage concessions, as well as all the seating area and the stage.
The larger stage.
Because that's all listed here in A.
Well, see, you guys, we're all, our minds are running to the negative here a lot, I mean, just, let's temper it.
Well, no, I, I, let's be clear, Mr. Mayor, as to what we're looking at. So I think we have to understand what we're putting into that 8.92 million. If it's A, and I do have a question, under local only, under auditorium upgrade, is about 360,000. Under other funding is 862,000. You know, so that's coming maybe from CIP. However, we're paying for the seats, but we're not paying out of CIP for space. So I'm not sure, you know, that's going to leave 862 dangling if we take out A total. Correct?
So right now, I mean...
Jim's going to answer that. Thank you, Jim.
So in question two, you'll notice that there is a total cost estimate of $10,557, of which 8,009 is bonded, and a million five.
Understand that, but what we've been told, in order to get to that 8.92, we're taking out A totally.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think what you're saying, Bob, is in question one, the CIP dollars are not, are not in this. In question one, CIP dollars will not be put.
Right.
CIP dollars only go if question two goes.
Yeah.
Yep.
But the larger situation is, we're losing 10,000 square feet. That is a significant change to the footprint.
I thought this covered everything.
It does. But Counselor Hayes is talking about if question two fails not just once, but twice.
Right, okay. But initially, this covers everything, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
It goes past everything.
And that's, and that's my concern. Again, question one passes, the architect should be able to move on.
Right.
And they're going to have to start eliminating that space totally. I think, and let's go to two, or B, we're taking out stadium totally, but I have a question there, and the question came up...
Can we just let someone else have a question, please?
Ask earlier, Mayor, but I think it's important to get this information on the table.
It is. I just think it's, it's my role, is just make sure that, I mean, Committee, Committee Men Poison, I haven't heard him speak in weeks. I'd love to hear, you know, and he's, he has a question, I think you've been waiting, please ask.
Couple of questions. One is, are we going to let the taxpayers know what the, the tax repercussion will be on number two, and is there any on number one? Because that's one of the questions. And then, how do you vote for something that we don't understand and people that haven't been following it? They're not going to know what they're voting for.
That's, that's part of the communicate, that's part of the communication that Holly's talking about, yes. I mean, we haven't been communicating, because this has been up and down, so we were going to communicate one question with information, but then we heard two questions. So once, on the 29th, when all this is, the dust settles, then absolutely we'll do, we're going to probably do two mailings home to residents with what's happened, what are the questions, what's included in the question, what's the meal rate impact on the questions. We have to redo everything. I've, I've told my administrative assistant.
It won't be on this when you're voting, right?
No.
Because they're going to look at that when they're voting, they're not going to see it in the mail.
It would be, it would be ideal. We had this discussion about simplicity, informative, where the, and you know all this, I mean, I'm sure you've heard this discussion 100 times. I mean, I'd love to see, okay, and question one, keep on going, and you're going to get this, this, and the color of the fabric on the seats are going to be blue, and it's going to impact your meal rate by 11 cents, whatever the number is.
The football team's not going to lose.
And the football team won't lose. If that can be elected on, then it would be great. But no, I think your point, it's, the education needs to start, and we need to get out in the community.
Exactly, we're waiting for this, yeah.
Counselor Hayes is trying to say, unfortunately, in order to get what he wants, which leaves the footprint alone, we're talking, going the full Monty, because we're talking a lot of square footage to eliminate or to keep. If we keep the square footage for 1,200 seats, it's not that much more to put the seats in the square footage. So really, it doesn't make sense if we're, you know, if we're going to build the infrastructure for 1,200 seats, but not put the seats in there, unless we want to eliminate things like the interior features. Now, we're spending $1.8 million for interior features, and instead of doing that, we were going to build the infrastructure, brick and mortar for the auditorium instead. But you see, just find out what it would cost to say, okay, we want, we want the brick and mortar for the, for the, the 1,200 seats in question one. How much is that going to add? Probably another million and a half dollars to question one, just for the brick and mortar for a 1,200-seat auditorium.
Okay, just for clarification, item A, how much is, of the 8.92 is represented in A that we're putting into two?
Is 3,482,438.
Most fields.
Plus 8,62069. So it's this number, right, Lisa, here?
Which includes the CIP?
Correct.
You really shouldn't be taking that out, because that's not a bonded item anyway.
This, yeah, the CIP dollars have to be accounted for, yes.
So it's not law.
Correct. So when we, because we knew the performing arts was the highest ticket in the package, we put the CIP dollars towards the auditorium, to reduce the cost of the auditorium.
I was saying, so we're talking about, about 4.2 million?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, let's go to B.
The stadium?
Stadium, so essentially, right now, we're talking about 2.4. Okay, the question that came up earlier with respect to the field that's being replaced, there was a six-month window that that has to be done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so if we take this out, then we get grass only.
Correct.
And we get the six lanes only.
Correct.
Okay. So there's no turning back on that, we end up with just grass.
Correct.
If, if I could, I just want to say that the redesign of the field moves the field also to make room for the other fields on the site. So that would be something that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, we were moving the track.
To, to fit eight lanes.
To fit that, and, and, and the multipurpose field next to it as well. We had to move things to fit.
But still, that's something that, that can be resolved with the state and the DOE process. Again, if that fails on, on the first round of question two, we still have a window of opportunity to get it passed. A modified version, it could be six lanes without a concession stand, or without a press box, whatever the case is.
Of leeches.
Yeah, standing room only.
It sounds like no leeches.
But I mean, whatever, whatever the...
Jim's leaning in.
Jim, Jim, lean in. You're on, hey, we're paying it, Jim, lean in. Going to get something out of this.
Nice.
Lawyers love this stuff.
And these details should be written out clearly for the public to understand what the ramifications are of each of these changes, including what Lisa just mentioned, that if we decide not to go with these additional, we'll have to reconfigure our athletic facilities. So that is going to be the most important thing, I think, that gets done in the next month, is that education.
Gentlemen, did you have something?
Jim was pointing out that you have six months to have a successful referendum for your, after your concept approval, so that would expire in October, was it, Jim? So, from the standpoint, and then if you think also about the standpoint of digesting the information, coming to agreement about what should go out to referendum, having the council orders getting to the referendum, so you're probably talking that it would be something like an October vote anyway. And I'm just sort of wondering, the architect is supposed to be really drilling down on the design during that time period, and so if you're drilling down on design A between a vote in, coming up in October, over that period of time, how much additional work would it be to then switch gears in October and cost to the project to then redesign that work?
I, I don't have a figure off the top of my head, again, just seeing these items this afternoon. We would have to go back and look at what that might mean to have that information at that timeframe, because you're right, when we get, when we understand what the scope is, we hit the ground running in order to make the, the schedule.
Just to kind of supplement what Bill was saying about that, actually, the actual work of getting the design done, this means, as a practical matter, you'd be looking at a vote in October, a month prior to your, your actual November election. So you'd be having a separate election within that timeframe. You're also, this, under the state rules, you're required to have your, get your final design and funding approval, and then get your final construction contract within nine months. So then, we're looking at, after the election, having a three-month window to kind of redo the redesign out to bid, back.
I think all this is really important. It, it, it should motivate us to get all the information and communicate with 23,055 residents between now and June 11th, so we have yeses on both. Again, a compromise is a compromise, it's not going to be a perfect solution. Then again, I don't think anybody on the city council, or very few people, I should say, on the city council, are supportive of one large question on the ballot, too. Again, it's a compromise. If this, I could only imagine the conflict would happen if we had one question and it did theoretically fail, and we'd have to go back and figure out why people didn't want to have it, or said no to it in the first place, redesign, everything. That would be, in my mind, is a very, very problematic issue. This is, we are now helping question one, the bulk of the project, go through, and then the secondary and equally financially expensive project be out there for, you know, and I think, I think it would pass. But again, this is less, we're chunking this out, and I think more workable potential if there is a no. And I'm, maybe I'm an eternal optimist, I always think the best of people and the process and the building committee and all the work that's been done, the architects, God, for how long? I think this is clear, I think it can be more concise, I think the information needs to get out there. I want to help with the education process, I hope we all would, including the building committee. But this, I believe, you know, we have all, we're always going to have a lot of questions, and we need, those questions need to be answered. They need to be answered for us, they need to be answered for the residents, but this presents the best and clearest, most transparent way forward. So, and again, like I said before, nobody's going to be tickled pink about this, it's a compromise. Nobody's ecstatic about compromise. But we are going to be ecstatic about a good reaction from the community and a really good feeling when this high school is open. I, for one, have a son who's going to be a senior the year this high school opens. And I had a, a long conversation with him, actually, on, when we were on a trip, and I'm like, you know, there's, hey, maybe this would, you know, would it be horrible if this was delayed six months? And he goes, yeah, it would be. And he goes, please, Dad, please, 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 I want to go and be the first graduating class member little. And I, I looked at that, and I'm like, looking at this kid, I'm like, you know, you got to do what's right, and sometimes that means, you know, you might be personally, or I might be personally unhappy. So that's why I think this needs to go through, regardless of what Ethan says.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I disagree with the word that the bulk of the project is in question one. I think we've recognized, just in A and B, we've taken out a large chunk out of the original project.
If we could, Lisa, could you verify that? I mean, if you look at the overall square footage of the project, the turns and twists of the building and so forth, what, in question one versus question two, again... of the building and so forth, what, in question one versus question two, again, having it split the way we do, with the Performing Arts Center being the only change on Q2 if it fails, is that 12,000 or 15,000 square feet, what percentage of the overall project is that?
Let's recognize also B.
Right, the tech, the tech aspects of the changing, yes, that performing arts space, not an art.
No, and I'm talking about element B, 2.4, the whole stadium facility.
We're talking about square footage of a building, is what I heard you say, correctly?
Well, no, you said the bulk is in one.
Okay, well, answer if you can answer both questions.
Well, part of one is the stadium as well, and that's part of that bulk.
So if you're looking at taking all of A as question two here, I've been doing some, some quick math here, seven, you have about 10,000, plus or minus, yeah, 10,000, thank you for pointing that out, 10,823 square feet in the auditorium. The overall project is 251,503 square feet. So you would, it would be a, a small reduction in the overall square footage, but it would be, to that one bar, it would be a significant reduction.
So we'd lose the column?
Not the column entirely. So if you recall...
We'd keep 345, excuse me?
No, I was thinking...
So we'd keep the 347 seats, is that correct?
Correct.
That the state gives us?
377, I've heard three different...
It's 367, it's right here.
367.
Whatever, 20 seats, more or less. We'd keep those, because those are from the state. But we wouldn't keep any of the lighting, any of the acoustics, or anything else.
The, there would be, obviously, that middle bar, that bar with the Performing Arts Center would have to be reconfigured. You wouldn't have the building going, eh, 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 and then way out. So they're obviously going to have to work to redesign, so there isn't a huge gap in the center column.
So the stadium's not included in this?
Stadium is in question two.
It's in what?
Question two.
It's in question two?
Correct.
It is, okay. I thought Bob was saying it wasn't included.
Well, it, it, Bob, the question I was bringing up, it is, it does move to two. One element we'd lose, because we have to provide a, a field usable replacement for the, for the, what we have now, it has to be done in six months.
So you're saying that stadium's moved from question one to two?
Yes.
Yep. That's, that's 2.4 million, moved to two. I think, I still have question on...
So, do you want to explain why? Bob's asking, why was the stadium moved to question two?
The idea was to look at two factors. The dollar amounts to be bonded for the questions, again, for the residents to have the question, instead of front-loading everything in one question and having what almost seemed like a nominal and kind of paltry, appeasing amount in Q2, to have it more diversified, and then try to look at it, the enhancements with regards to extracurricular activities versus geothermal, brick and mortar, finish and so forth. The best way we could think of to really kind of chunk it out into, into areas that were closely, as close as possible aligned. So enhancements versus geothermal, which is not really an enhancement, I would say, but is a new system, and so forth, again, with that quantifiable ROI. So that was kind of the determination factor, and, and when we listen to the community, pro or con, what pops up all the time is performing arts and sports complex. That seems to be, nobody's talking about the, you know, the additional size of the gymnasium or adult education space or whatnot. They're talking about those two factors, and they're high-visibility factors, too, or variables.
I guess, just a question, Mr. Mayor, who's "we"? Who are you speaking of?
Ethan, he's 13, my son. We had a long talk about this.
Well, you were also speaking...
No, we, we talked about Bonnie this morning, when I had a conversation with committee woman.
Yeah, so who was part of that group this morning?
I'm working, I just got done one, Counselor Hayes, I know you're passionate about this, just let me finish.
I am, I am.
That's great.
We've got several more questions coming.
Okay, let's make sure we're staying on target here. It's a compromise. Committee Woman, Committee Woman Hayes, the city manager, the superintendent, and myself, and the assistant, the city manager, Mr. Kroll, we talked about this at 10 o'clock this morning, okay? After evaluating everything and looking at it, and I had some suggestions on compromise, they were thankful enough, I was very thankful that you all had time for this, and that we could come together and then be able to present it tonight, in order to get something that meets the, meets the bulk of what we need.
So where are we, Jason? Where are we coming together on this? What are we doing with this?
I think what we're doing right now is we need to split into our respective bodies and have a vote. School committee first, and then...
What are we voting on, though? We voting on this?
You want to accept the bond split as is outlined here in your packet, what we discussed this morning. And that's how it is right here.
And I know that. I'm just asking a question on it. So I, I guess, the "we," I think Mr. Hayes was talking about, the "we," who are you "we" hearing from that says, no performing arts, no whatever on it, you know? And we're all split, because we all hear from people that are in favor of the performing arts, people that are in favor, are not in favor of the performing arts, or we hear both sides of the stories on it. I could take you to my buddies at McDonald's on Wednesday afternoons, and they're split on it, but they all want a new school. And if I said to them, this, hey, we're not going to have a, a stadium, you're going to have to bring your lawn chair, they would hit the ceiling on that. All right, so, or, you know, we're not going to have a performing arts center, we can't get 1,000 kids into this. I'm really sorry, Jason, I'm going to speak. We can't get...
Mayor, just call me mayor. Why don't you, if you're going to disrespect me, let's disrespect the office and the individual, it's better.
No. So 1,000 seats, whatever. I, I think that the community is split on this, and I think that if we pull these out, we're pitting, we are pitting athletics against performing arts. We'll get them out.
I'd just like to put on the table, through our discussion Monday night, Leroy, Mr. Walker, you put forth, let's get down to 11:05 in question one, correct? And I think we were working towards that, and I think that was a more, a better compromise than what I see. This is not a compromise. You're, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you were away, and you're coming in, and all of a sudden, in print, putting down what you want.
Listen, I did, no, you're not going to, you're not going to put words into my mouth. I'm not putting down what I want. I'll tell you what I want. I want seven questions. I want everything itemized, down to the minute, in very explanatory terms, I want it all listed. That's what I want, but it's not about me. It's about kind of trying to get very different personalities around this table and two different bodies, plus respecting the building committee's input, okay, to come together to say, this is clear, this is concise, we're not taking away any of the recommendations that the building committee made, and we're putting it out to the voters for them to be the final judge and jury on this. That's it. We're not talking about taking 200 seats out, we're not negotiating against ourselves. It's not what I want, it's what the people of the city want. And that's the question, and we have to make sure they feel good about this process. They have to feel good when they go, when they leave that, that booth, and they, they made their decision, they voted yes or no, whatever, and when they see the results, even if they're on the wrong side, they need to feel good about it. The other questions I saw on proposals, and what I heard, and what we read, and what we've all heard from constituents and read in the papers, didn't make people feel good. This, I believe, I, though it's not what my first choice would be, but in the spirit of compromise, nobody's ever happy. You know, in a court of law, I've heard this before, in mediation, who wins? No one, okay? You know, and everybody comes off a little bit mad. This is something that the people will respect, and that is our responsibility, in my opinion.
And I'll, I'll piggyback on, on the mayor, is I am confident this project's going to go forward. So, you know, we can worry about the what-ifs, it's, do you believe that having these two questions split in the way they're being split is listening to the community to say, you have two options, knowing that we have to work hard to get the, the questions voted? The people who are, would support one question are going to support two questions.
That's right.
Is this enough to get some of the no's to vote yes? I still think we win, I, I'm confident. So when we spoke this morning, we, we said, what's going to get people to feel they were heard, to have two splits? It's not going to change what I believe is the majority to vote for this high school. And I have that much confidence, you could put 3 million in there, 5 million in there, 10 million. The community's waited a long time for this, and I am confident when they read what's in the second question, there is no question, it will pass.
Counsel Titus?
Mayor, thank you very much. I just want to, you know, kind of go along with what, what superintendent said, what the mayor said, but what I want to remind everybody is that, that we had a short period of time to actually talk about a dollar figure. I, for one, had brought forth a number of close to what you said before we voted in a resolve to maximize it at 15 million. This council voted unanimously to cap it at 15 million, so we really can't talk about the numbers now. In the 11th hour, if we're going to go back on what we did before, then we're just, we might as well have meetings for the next six months.
Right.
We said 15 million was the cap, okay? I've always felt that it should be two questions, one for the state share and one for the 15 million, and let the voters decide, because again, we're fighting over what should be in the first question, what should be in the second question, and that's going to go into the next 10 meetings before we can decide what mix is going to make everybody happy. So, I mean, I'm happy with this, and this is a compromise that I'll accept. I'm not exactly happy with it, because I'd rather have one question for the state share. I don't want the state who's been generous enough to say, hey, folks, here's 105 million dollars, yeah, but we're going to muddy it up and put our own stuff into your question, so it might not pass. That's why previous referendums have always separated the state share from the local share. Well, at least Sanford did, right?
No, Sanford put most of their local in the first question. They put 7 million in the first question, they put 2 million in the second question.
But as a mix?
Yes.
They put as a mix, so maybe that makes sense, the mix does make more sense.
Mount Air Rat put it, all of it in the, in the first question, and one turf field in the second question. Hampton Academy put it all in the first question.
Put it all in the first question. So I'm, I mean, I'm happy with this compromise. I think that we can debate all day long what should be in part, first part or second part. I was, again, I would really think it'd be cleaner to separate it completely, but in the spirit of not doing that, then I would agree to. And I also agree with you, superintendent, that it's probably going to, if the first question will pass, the second question will also pass. I mean, I'm a little bit discouraged, because I think some of the questions people have had relates to what is, you know, going to be the best for our students, and some question whether 4 million dollars for an auditorium and 2 million dollars for Google stairs and a community common. Was the common area, that whole area...
The community stairs is $90,000.
Right, but it includes...
The enhancements are trophy cases, wood. It, it, enhancements aren't just the Google stairs.
No, no, there was student commons, there was...
But the student commons, the cafeteria.
Yeah, and there was the, what do you call that? The, the different kind of transitioning cafeteria, what'd you call that, the...
No, there's a, there's a cafeteria that has the community stairs. The enhancement was trophy case, wood, so when you walk in, it's, it's more of a, less of institutional...
Yeah, we had a student stair, we had distributed dining, a town square, school town square, which is 800,000, and a student commons, which is 800,000.
Right. That's as you walk into the school.
Right. So, I mean, I mean, those are the kind of things that, we're not, we're not going to have a turf field outside, but we're going to have that. So, I, I mean, who can decide what should be in the first question, what should be in the second question? We can debate all along. I think we just need to go with what we've got.
Well, I think we can, yeah.
Only because we can't, either we're going to do it all, or, you know, that's just my feeling.
A lot of work has gone in this in a short amount of time. I am comfortable with this, because I'm comfortable with two questions, because it does give the public voice and choice. And I think this is well thought out. I, I think that we've discussed it long enough. I would like to say that this is a very good compromise. The only thing is to make sure that people understand what this says, as, as Counsel Lozani has said, because it may be confusing, even though you send a couple of notices home, but, you know, so have some sort of an explanation as to what it is exactly that they're voting for here, what is exactly. But listed in question two, it's clear to me it's in question two. Question one's a little nebulous, but I would be comfortable with this.
I will support anything that keeps the 100, the 1,222,000 total, and I think you've done that in the two questions, and I think Andy's right, we can sit here all night deciding on which parts going in which part. And I agree with Katie, and I hope Jason agrees, too, that the city is going to pass this. So as long as you haven't cut anything out of that total, put it to the voters and see what happens.
You have my word, Committee Woman Gauthier, that there will be nobody out there more vocal on the education of this project than me. So I'll put money down on that one.
I can fight for them.
Five bucks.
So therefore, I just got a nod from the mayor that we should move along on this. We have a, we have a 7 o'clock meeting here. So my school committee...
Wait, we just have to go to regular...
Yeah, right, but I just wanted thumbs up or thumbs down on it first, to see if everybody's in agreement of it before we go. We'll vote twice, yes. We have to vote, right.
I like the, you know, I agree, I can live with. If anybody goes down, we have to keep, you know...
See, this is a first reading, there, with changes can be made for the second reading, is that correct?
They're only reading. And we have, so, City Council, we can step aside, and we'll let...
Okay, so when we go into our meeting, we're going to have to vote on this. So if anybody have a problem sideways, if you don't want it down or up? All right, all school committee members, up, 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 down?
Bonnie? You need to go into a meeting.
What?
You have to go into a meeting.
I'm not voting, we're just taking a straw.
Okay, your straw poll of everyone or just school?
Just the school committee.
Okay, sorry, I'm trying to...
So we have two sides?
Side.
You're down?
No, I'm side.
Side, so you're, you can live with it.
I'm with it, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's unclar for the voters, but I can live with it.
Right, Faith, you're up, okay, thank you.
Well, you're, you're not going anywhere.
Thank you. You going to stay for a while?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, good, good.
We're only supposed to be meeting for 10 minutes.
I call this meeting to order of, of April 24th. This is a regularly scheduled school committee meeting. We do, we've had workshops all evening, so right now, I'm going to ask for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, the consent agenda, could I have a motion to accept the consent agenda, please?
So moved.
Is Ross here?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so, call, Faith.
Thank you, Faith.
Second.
No, we already got it, thank you.
Okay.
And, any questions or anything on that? All right, going into public participation, we have anybody that would like to speak to, anything that's not on the agenda tonight? And unfortunately, that's, you can't speak to the new school, because we're going to vote it.
You can in the item if they would like.
That's right, okay, Mr. Tuttle is out there, so, okay, so, anybody here that's going to speak? Okay, I'm closing the public participation section. All right, Superintendent Grandin, your report, please.
Well, I'm reporting on what we just discussed. So, this is to accept what was proposed in the workshop, which is question one, representing Of that is 105, up to 105 million from the state, and 5.5 million in local bonds, which will cover the state portion and the geothermal climate control, interior features, an increased gymnasium size, and any, the additional local space mechanical systems. And question two will be 10 million, 10.5 million, which will be covered by a local bond of 8.9 million, plus 1.5 million in CIP dollars and any donations and funds and grants for the second turf field, and that will cover the performing arts, the athletic stadium with artificial turf lighting, the grandstand, concession building and restroom, the 215 additional parking spaces, the landscaping and site furnishing and additional building spaces. So, that's what you are, you are recommending that to the city council, who will be meeting after this, to do their first reading of the bond council, not the question. They approve the question on Monday night after their public hearing.
So, are there any questions?
No.
No, okay. All in favor of approving the referendum question, please, raise your hands.
Well, I think you have to move, did you move in a second? I might have missed it.
Oh, I did, maybe I didn't.
No, back up, it's all right.
Just back up, back up.
All right, can I have a question? Oh, I thought you were. Could I please have a, a motion to approve the referendum question? Thank you, Pat.
So moved. Second.
Second, all freedom, thank you. All in favor? All opposed? Question passes. So, we do have a referendum, and then, then we're going to have to have a lot of education going out to the public.
Yes, we know that.
Which we all need to be involved in. Okay, you could all read the upcoming meetings that we have, beginning on May 1st. There'll be a special meeting on executive session on May 8th, and a regular meeting on March, May 15th, and Mr. Kendall owes me big time for this whole thing, so I just wanted to put that on record.
May 8th, anything but the executive session?
No, it's just an executive session, it will start at 6 o'clock, we need to go through a grievance procedure.
And we hope you all can make it.
Yes.
So, any other business to be brought forth from us, to us?
I would just like to comment against the suggestion to put in a questionnaire with the ballots, if you voted against, why? To me, that's a self fulfilling prophecy. The people say, if they already think we're going to vote against it, why are we even having this vote?
Very good point, Bob, I agree with you, very good.
So, what we can communicate to the city council is that we approved the referendum question. Do you want, I make a motion that we do not approve a non-binding question added? Do you want to make a, a motion for that, Bob?
Yeah, I would make that motion.
Okay.
So, we have a motion that we will not include the, the-
Non-binding.
The non-binding yes or no.
Why you voted, why you didn't.
Why you voted, why you didn't vote.
I'll second that, for sure.
Any other discussion on this?
It's not recommended by our attorney, or the city attorney, or the city clerk, so, yeah, it's unnecessary.
I, I think that if anybody wanted to do anything, my personal opinion would be that they could do an exit poll if they needed to.
Right, if they need to do an exit.
That's after they voted, so it would have no impact on it.
Right, as you, as you're going out, and it might be a good thing for the students to be involved at, on it. So, all right, so, did we vote on that one?
No.
Yes, we did.
You need to vote.
No, you need to vote, we need to vote.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm going on vacation in four hours.
You're doing great.
Come on.
All right, all in favor of not having the non-binding vote there? It's unanimous, okay, so, adjourn. Now I can adjourn?
Yes, you may.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Really?
A second? All in favor? We're out.
Okay.
Yep.